All right, noting the time, I'm going to call this meeting into order. Welcome to the Westwood Planning Board Meeting. My name is Trevor Lobenstein and I'll be chairing this meeting tonight. All meetings are recorded by Westwood Media Center. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to record this meeting? And if so, would you please identify yourself so everyone is aware? Seeing none, as a reminder, please turn off your cellphone ringers. The agenda is available at the back of the room. The meeting will follow the order on the agenda and the meeting will be civil and all people will be respected, will be treated respectfully. The format of the meeting will be when an item is called, the applicant will come forward to the podium to present their application to the board. The board will proceed to staff comments, the board members will ask questions of the applicant, and the public will be given an opportunity to comment. When it is time for the public comment period, the chairman will call those wishing to speak to the podium. Once at the podium, please identify yourself by stating your name and address to the record. All comments and questions shall be directly through the chair. All people will be given the opportunity to speak, but in the interest of time and fairness, repetitive or off-topic comments may be cut short. First, are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
No changes. All right. The first few items on this agenda tonight are the public hearing for November Town Meeting zoning amendment articles. We have four that we're planning to review tonight, the first of which is an article to allow accessory uses in the HB zone, i.e. cafeterias. Abby, would you like to...
Sure.
...offer a brief explanation?
All right. So, this article is proposing, what you see on the screen and in your packet in front of you, the changes to the zoning are highlighted in red font. So, this section of the bylaw is pulled from our accessory use table. There's already a section that allows for accessory uses such as cafeterias, snack bars, gift shops, cafes, to be fully within a building to serve primarily to serve the employees of the building with no outdoor or exterior advertising. That is previously, currently not allowed in the highway business zone. It's only allowed in our industrial zones and our ARO zoning district. So, this bylaw proposes allowing it in the highway business zone, which is the areas highlighted on this map, which is along Route 1, and then the area around Southwest Park and a little bit by the highway there. So, this article proposes allowing this accessory use in the highway business zone. That's the only proposed change with this.
Okay. Are there any comments from the board?
Nothing additional.
Okay. Is there anyone in the gallery who'd like to speak or comment on this particular article? I think it seems pretty straightforward. It's certainly helpful for some of these businesses, the opportunity to have this use in their space if they so desire, so...
Was there any opposition anywhere that this was presented?
We did, last week, Trevor, Dave and I did attend the Finance and Warrant Commission's hearing and did give a brief introduction, and they asked what, you know, if there were any disadvantage. And the only disadvantage we could think of is really that, I think the reason it wasn't originally allowed in highway business was to encourage employees to visit nearby restaurants. However, now, looking back, we'd like to remain competitive and attract these new tenants and, you know, make sure that our commercial space is filled. So, we'd like to remain competitive and have, if a prospective tenant wants to have a cafeteria, we'd like them to have that ability.
All right. Move on to the next one. The next article is an article to limit the number of residential dwelling units in FMUOD 6 and 7, which we are often, or commonly known as the sort of Washington Street and High Street districts in town.
Right. So, the purpose of this zoning amendment is to amend the flexible multiple-use overlay district FMUOD 6 and 7 only. This is on Washington and High Streets overlay districts to add a definitive cap to the number of special permits that you could issue for, with a cap on the number of residential. Now, the Washington Street overlay district, that's on Washington Street. It runs from Municipal Lot down to the Optometrist Building and then across the street from the CVS property down to the railroad tracks almost to the end of Washington Street where it gets close to Everett Street. The High Street overlay district, it runs from the Denham Savings Bank to the Santander Bank, and then the office building next to the Plaza with Camellas, and then the Starbucks up to where the Culver School Apartments and Bank are. So, this next slide and in your packet shows the exact language that's proposed. So, this would add a new section to this section of the bylaw to limit the number of residential units in FMUOD 6 and 7. So, the aggregate number of residential dwelling units for all projects allowed by special permit in these districts shall not exceed 90 dwelling units per district. And then, since the original public hearing notice and since your last meeting, we added another, suggest adding another sentence based on comments that, to clarify that this number includes the ones that have already been permitted and the existing ones that were permitted and in place under the upper-story residential overlay district. Those are the ones at the Culver School. So, the 12 on High Street, I mean, sorry, the 6 on High Street and the 12 on Washington Street would be included already in that total cap. And so, when we were developing the zoning, staff took a look at, you know, how do we come up with the maximum number of dwelling units? So, we took a look at the existing zoning and the limitations that are set out in the section of the zoning. You have the minimum project size area is 1 acre, the maximum building height, 36 feet, which is three stories. You have the residential is limited to no more than 50% of the total gross floor area for any project. You have a max on the floor area ratio, district buffers. We had to look at parking and circulation requirements, and the bylaw also has a requirement for public amenity area. So, then we looked at the existing parcels. We have 13 on High Street and 21 that are in this zone on Washington Street. So, from there, we really looked at those properties and had to make several assumptions, but tried to look at what could the possible maximum build-out be if we were, if someone were to try to develop it. So, we really looked at all the properties, see which parcels could be combined to meet these requirements and get the biggest building possible with first-floor retail or office, and then with upper-story residential, try to look at parking underground to maximize how many units could be developed above that, and then look at the minimum possible landscaping that may be acceptable. And from there, we came up with a total possible in the Washington Street district would be 149 residential dwelling units, and then 119 on High Street. So, really, looking at those parcels, in the Washington Street, it would be, you know, you already have the 12 that were approved on Washington Street that are finishing up construction now, and then possibly the Petruzzello and Town Project proposed is limited to those maximum of 28. And then, we really looked at those other properties, like the Dunkin' Donuts, the Needham Bank, potential Roach Brothers site, and even, you know, some of the land in the district, the fire station in the park is not developable. And then, we had to look at High Street, the Good Plaza. That's the plaza where the toast office is, post office, the Stagecoach Plaza where the Camellas is, the total redevelopment of the gas station and the Starbucks lot. So, that's where we came up with those figures. And then, from there, we thought those numbers are much higher than what would actually ever come into place either. There's just too many assumptions. So, from there, we looked at, you know, the purpose of the, this district and how we came up with 90. We think that the 149 and the 119 are overinflated numbers, so 90 was a much more reasonable number that can still allow, you know, encourage development to meet the goals of the zoning, but also add that clear maximum for, to add this certainty to the bylaw. And then, just to reiterate, the way the zoning is drafted right now, it would include the dwellings that already exist on High Street and the ones on Washington Street that have been issued special permits.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the board?
So, I was wondering, you have 119 in one district and 149 in the other, yet it's 90 in each. So, in one case, excuse me, in one case, it's a 24% reduction in the number of units from where you calculated, and in the other case, it's a 40% reduction, which is pretty wide range there. So, how did you, you know, why don't we have something more consistent?
So, I can explain that. The numbers that, I came up with the 149 and the 119 maximum that I think you could ever develop on any of these, any of these properties, if you took it to the extreme, put underground parking under each of them, maximize the floor area, minimize the landscaping, and had no public amenities. I don't believe that's how this planning board or any planning board would actually approve applications, and I don't believe it's the way anyone would actually develop the properties. I think the number 90 is a more realistic number for both of the, both of the sides of town. And the reason for that, the Washington Street number that gets to 149, that takes into account the Roach Brothers property, which I don't think in likelihood would be developed, and if developed, I don't think it would be developed to that extent. There's a flood storage area back there, the train tracks are close by. It also involves combining multiple properties, especially the properties down past Roach Brothers. I think there are six different properties that would be combined into one in order for it to be accomplished. It also includes the Needham Bank parcel, which again, I don't think is at all likely to be redeveloped. So, I think 90 is a very comfortable number for that area, based on what is, what is there, what's developable, and how the lots would have to be combined. I don't think the board would ever see numbers that high, and I certainly don't think they'd see numbers higher. On the High Street side, we have two plazas that are more likely, I'd say, to be good candidates for redevelopment. The Stagecoach Plaza actually has an existing building that could accommodate apartments on the upper levels in the existing building. So, I think that I would give more credence to the likelihood of those units being developed because they're in an existing building. And the Good Plaza is in very rough shape, I'd say. That building is quite old. The way it's situated on the lot, it doesn't make good use of the space with parking in front and parking behind. I think that also is an excellent candidate for rehabilitation, and I think that the, if the property owners were interested in doing this, I think the value would work out, the gas station properties as well. I just think there's a higher likelihood of the properties in High Street being developed closer to the numbers I calculated than I think there is in Washington Street. The intent of putting these caps on, remember, we've discussed this before, was not to limit the amount of development, but to make it understandable to people what would likely occur there. Any development in either of these FMUOD districts is only by special permit, only with the approval of the board, and only if a project comes forward that makes sense and that meets all of the performance criteria, including traffic review, environmental review, drainage review. But it's, but the cap that we're proposing is, should be somewhere close to what could actually be developed. It should not be inflating the number, and it should not be deflating the number. It should just be explaining what you actually think you might see there. So, I do think that 90 is a number that could work for both of them, even though my calculations show that if you really shoehorned in those apartments, you could get more on Washington Street than on High Street. I don't think it's likely. So, the numbers 149 and 119 are the maximum that could fit in. The numbers 90 in both are the numbers that I would feel comfortable is the maximum that this board would ever
Yeah, so, well, that's a good explanation, and it's a long explanation, but, but just, someone just looking at the numbers, I would still say, why isn't there a, say, reduce it by a certain percentage and apply the same percentage to both?
And I'd say, because the intent is not to reduce it. The intent is to give a number that's realistic for what could go there. So, what we have now is you're allowed 50% of the floor area on any project that receives a special permit. That's what the requirement is now, 50% of floor area. The 90 number, I believe, is close to what could actually be developed in either district. The intent of the article was never to reduce the number of apartments that could be constructed there. The article was intended to provide a number that people can understand, not a number that would reduce a property owner's rights.
Nevertheless, we would be bound by it. So, if sometime in the future, Roach Brothers were to be redeveloped, then you would have that number constraining there.
That's right. You would. And I think that's what people are looking for. They're looking for a finite number. So, you would be constrained by that. I don't feel uncomfortable with that constraint because I don't believe Roach Brothers in the foreseeable future would be looking to develop their property for mixed use.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I definitely see where your comment, where your comment comes from. I kind of had the same hesitation before I heard the full explanation. I mean, one thing that I think is very, very real on the horizon for planning all communities is the future of parking requirements, and that's going to be, so that's going to be heavily impacting these types of discussions in the coming, if not decade, decades. So, I think, you know, there's more potential on these sites than I think we realize in a way, and keeping it kind of in a flexible zone, I think, makes a lot of sense, so...
Any further commentary?
No.
Yeah, I mean, I have a few questions here. So, this would go in as a bylaw. So, can this be modified over time? Like, is this the type of thing that we could, can be brought back? So, it needs a 2/3 vote to be approved. Like, could, does the planning board have the flexibility to put in a waiver of some sort to allow for? So, if somebody wanted to go a few apartments greater than that, can waivers be put in place for that?
No. This is not a number that could be waived. The bylaw could be amended. If at some point in the future, either the planning board or anyone in town felt that they needed a greater number of apartments, they could propose a zoning amendment to Town Meeting that would also require 2/3's vote. But the planning board in granting a special permit cannot waive this number.
You know, I definitely like the spirit of this type of an article because the main thing for me is that it provides predictability to residents. I mean, if we think about it, just seven months ago, we almost, not we, the town almost voted in to remove apartments from those FMUODs. So, here we are trying to get a little bit, I think this is, for me, this is a reaction to that. That's why I, that's why I presented this as a possibility, and I was happy to see the Selectmen bringing something like this forward. For the 90, my only concern is that it wouldn't get that 2/3's vote at Town Meeting. I, I'm not so su, I sort of feel the way that Steve is looking at it from a proportion standpoint. 90 on both sides, I'm not sure if that would get the positive vote that I would want to see in this type of an article. So, I'd like to see it reduced, but I definitely support this type of article for Town Meeting.
Okay. Anyone else? And care to comment, commentate? Okay. Guess I'll open it up to the folks in the, in the audience. Is there anyone who has a comment or question for the board or staff or anyone?
What's that?
You're good. It's all you.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Nancy Hyde, member of the Board of Selectmen. And as I said in one of your previous meetings when you were talking about this, the Board of Selectmen does feel that this is a good idea in light of some concerns that people had that potentially there could be a far more inflated number. And the only way to be clearer about it, we think, is doing something like this, and I think that helps allay some concerns. And it does not take away the authority that you folks have with the special permit granting authority that resides in your capable hands. So, I think it's less about what the number is than it is about having a reasonable number. And I think Nora's given a lot of thought, and Abby have given a lot of thought to this. I frankly don't have an opinion on what you were raising as a concern, Steve. I think it's, I think you need to be smart about it and open-minded to the fact that this is just a number that shows some maximum. It doesn't require that you grant permits up to that number at this point, and to push it down too low may be a constraint down the road that you just didn't need to put in place. So, there's no right answer, but I would hate to see us just get too caught up in the number and fail to get it approved. And I think that's the thing we have to keep our eyes on, that if this doesn't pass, we're where we were before, and that's not really where I think collectively we want to be.
You know, my concerns are purely within the consistency of the numbers and the math involved. And, but Nora's explanation is very good because if so much of it is the Roach Brothers property, I would think if a larger development came forward on that, we'd be thinking about a whole, you know, lot of things anyway. So, at that point, it would, everything would be up for discussion.
Okay. All right. If there's no more, if there's no further discussion, I think we can probably move on. Third article we're to discuss is, has to do with medical uses definitions.
Yeah. So, this article, this proposes some amendments. You're amending your existing definitions for the medical centers and clinics and the Office of Healthcare Professionals, and then adds definition for hospital and adds a definition for substance rehabilitation or treatment facility. We realized we didn't have anything in our bylaw that describes those uses, the overnight care. So, we've added them into the definitions with the zone and then put them in the table, table of uses to specify where they are and are not allowed. And so, with these new definitions, we've proposed the hospital and substance abuse facility to be only permitted by special permit in the ARO zoning district.
All right. Any, is there another slide or is that the slide?
No, that's just a slide. I think you have the exact language in your packet.
Yep.
Showing the table.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I was looking for. Okay. Any questions or comments on the board?
And then, the last article was housekeeping. I've just noticed a couple. We usually keep this for any, correcting any errors that you might find when you're reviewing this, and I did find a couple. There is one in the FMUOD, it referenced the wrong section number for the public amenities. So, I just want to update that, and then outlined something that was missing in the table of contents, and then reference to an old section of the bylaw that's since been deleted.
Okay. I trust there's no questions on those. Okay. Are there any questions from the, from the audience on either of these articles? Okay. Great. Do I need to continue the public hearing, or do we need to make a motion to continue it or just...
Yes, you should continue the hearing.
Until...
I think before you continue it, the FinCom is asking for you to report on these articles in final language on the 17th. So, I think you'd want to vote the final language before you, and then continue it in case there's a further amendment.
Sure.
That comes out of that meeting.
All right.
Yep.
So, I will make a motion that we recommend these four articles to, that we recommend FinCom approve these. Is that basically what we're, we just recommend for FinCom?
Recommend, I forget. At this point, we would recommend...
You'd recommend FinCom's approval of the articles.
FinCom's approval, okay.
Then I make a motion that we recommend FinCom approve these four articles. Second?
All right. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Five votes.
And then, we continue your hearing to Tuesday, October 17th, at the library at 7:30?
Okay. Can I get a motion for...
6:30.
6:30?
That was just in case. Do we have 7:30 for the, that's just in case of your other stuff. We'll say 7:30 in the community meeting room at the library.
Okay. Can I have a motion for continuance?
I'd like to make a motion to continue this hearing until Tuesday.
October 17th.
November...
Sorry, October 17th.
October 17th, 7:30 PM.
Yep.
At the...
Library in the meeting room.
Library meeting room.
Yep.
Hey, a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So moved. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. All right. Our next item is number two, 80 and 88 Morgan Farm Road, lots nine and eight. This is an approval, not required, plan.
Right. So, this A&R plan shows a lot line change between lots nine and 10 of the Morgan Farm subdivision. So, this lot here, this is the property line going this way. This proposes straightening out the line and giving this 2,0494 square feet, combining it with this lot here. So, they both have the minimum required frontage, and they both maintain their required minimum lot size.
Any particular reason why they didn't get the old lot line right in the first place?
I'm not sure. I don't know what the history was.
How they start off with a line in two parts and then the side to straighten it out, it's just...
I don't know. Yeah. I think you were the only one here at the time, but, right. So, these are the remaining lots.
Filling with lue here, so I guess anything can happen.
Okay.
I don't have any questions or comments.
I don't think I do either.
All right. Do we just...
Yep.
Make a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve, that we accept the A&R plan, that we endorse the A&R.
Endorse, yeah. Thanks.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approval of this A&R plan?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Was that, Steve, did you vote yes?
Yeah, I voted yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Do we need to sign?
Sign it, yes. If everyone could sign it.
Just a Sharpie on one?
The Sharpie on the Marlar, then you can use a regular pen on the other ones. Thank you. Yes, I think any color's fine. Do you, do you want black?
Oh, no, either.
Yeah.
Everybody's got that cough. That's for a week.
All right. All right, continuing our theme of Morgan Farm Estates. The next item is Morgan Farm Estates definitive subdivision. They have a request to reduce their bond for Phase Two.
Right. So the developer's just a bond reduction that we had reviewed in your packet. You received a recommended estimate from the data group from Phil Tarris. So he recommended releasing, partial release from the tri-party agreement that you have in place that's dated August 21st, 2015, be reduced from $81,623 to $48,146. So that you have that $48,146 remaining for the Phase Two portion of Morgan Farm.
Oh, just flip that switch on. Do we have a sense of what the remaining work is that they're trying to?
Yes. We did have that in your packet. Let me see. I know there's, the tree plantings are still included, the street tree plantings are included in that amount. You know what? Sorry, I forgot to put it in your packet, but I do have it right here. Still to finish up the sidewalks, the gravel on the sidewalks, the pavement, the binder, complete the catch basins, all the curbing, the seating, and the street trees.
Okay. All right. Are there any questions or comments?
No.
I'm just wondering what kind of, is this leverage to finish essentially? So this is, they've completed a certain amount of work, so now we'd be reducing it to 33,000?
Um.
Or is it 33,000?
248,000.
Yep. The, oh wait, okay, you did have it, I wasn't logged in, sorry. Yep, you're releasing essentially 33,477, so that you still have the 48,000 remaining for Phase Two. You're still also holding some money in Phase One. So Phase Two is the, is the last part of the subdivision. There's a couple lots that go past the apple seed lane. But the purpose of, of the bond is if, that we're, that you're always holding enough just in case if the developer walked away, that we would have enough to finish, to finish the work.
Okay.
And how, what is their, we've had some applicants that have had issues with completing work. What is the track record for this?
Pretty good. We've had, because a developer can request partial releases throughout the development or wait to the end or, and this developer has sporadically, as work has progressed, come to you for sporadic releases. So we have these inspections of the work more often to determine what's finished. Some of the older ones that maybe were completed or almost completed and then there was no release ever requested, and those tend to be more from 15, 20 years ago.
Yes, I mean, if the, if the track record's good, I don't have an issue really.
Okay, anybody else? All right. Anyone from the audience interested in commenting on this item? I'm pretty sure that would be no. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve this bond reduction for Phase Two of Morgan Farm Estates subdivision?
The motion is to recommend the approval, Abby?
No, we actually approve it.
Just approve it.
Yep.
Approve it.
Or?
Just a motion to approve.
So I'll make a motion to approve, uh?
The reduction.
Reduction of the trepidite agreement for Phase Two of the Morgan Farm Estates dated August 21st, 2015, to be reduced from the $81,623 to $48,146.
All right.
I will second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, the motion passes. All right. What's that? Moving right along. Number four. 247 Station Drive, formerly known as One N-Star Way. This is N-Star Electric Energy, EverSource Energy EIDR Public Hearing. Proposal for ground-mounted solar canopies in parking areas, a hearing that was continued from the 19th of September.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and residents of Westwood. My name is Steve Wea, I'm with Weston and Sampson Engineers. I'm here on behalf of EverSource Energy, where I have Amy Voicing Shea, who's a project manager for the solar portfolio of projects. As you mentioned, on September 19th, we had a hearing which was continued primarily to address two concerns of this board. In simple terms, it was the lighting plan and the landscape plan. In examining the lighting plans, we didn't have a fully developed lighting plan that showed what the light levels would be from the lights that would be removed and the lights that would be installed, and to make sure that we had light levels underneath the canopies and within the open area of parking that met the town's requirements. And so we went back to the lighting designer and, and came up with a plan that we have filed with you that shows all of the light levels from existing and proposed conditions. And so that plan basically calls for at least one foot candle underneath the covered parking and a half a foot candle outside of that. That'll be accomplished by removing, I think there are a total of 50-some-odd fixtures, light poles that are there now that are either single or double-headed. There's a table that's included in the lighting design that shows the 122 fixtures that'll be up underneath the canopies. There are 15 existing fixtures that are double fixtures, meaning there's two on a single light pole, referred to as back-to-back. There are 39 existing singles that'll remain. There are 26 wall packs that we had to install at the ends of the canopy. And if you look at the lighting plan and sort of, they're the purple circles at the ends that were needed to be installed in lieu of the light poles that came down to be able to spread and get the lighting levels that we needed to get. And it was either use those wall packs or put up poles, which we thought was defeating the purpose of trying to shield the residential neighborhoods from, from the light. And so in running, rerunning the model, we have a lighting plan that shows what the light levels are at ground level at five-foot grids, and we think that it's a good lighting plan that doesn't allow any light trespass and meets the goals. We also just, again, remind and ask for the one waiver that we were looking for with the 24/7 lighting security. EverSource, technically, they don't close up there, so we'd like to be able to operate those the way that they do now on photo cells. And EverSource has offered that if the nature of their call center ever changes, of course, they would go back to operating in compliance with today's existing code on the lighting. On the landscaping plan, again, we had a pretty generic plan for you on the 19th that admittedly wanted to be fully vetted, that had details on exactly what plants, how many, what the counts were for both removal and installation. So we had our landscape architect, I think, meet with Abby, go up to the site, look at it, and come up with a palette of plants that were revised even yesterday, I think, with review with, I think, some of the neighbors and at Abby's discretion, to look at those plants. And the planting plan now calls for, it's a mix of evergreen trees and shrubs. The trees are 29 Douglas firs, 20 Norway spruce, 12 blue spruce, and 11 arborvitae. That would be in the eight-foot-tall range for trees at the time of planting so that they have an immediate impact. In addition, there are shrubs that are 12 inkberry, eight Chinese juniper, eight Japanese boxwood. And again, these are primarily along the north and western side of the property boundary where there is an existing buffer that, that needs a little bit of TLC to, to prep it up. And so you have those two items. In addition, we met with the ZBA. The first hearing on the 20th was continued to the 27th, and, and they did vote to approve the special permit condition upon this board's findings with these additional plans. If they're acceptable, then they would be acceptable to the ZBA.
Thank you. Thank you for that update. Abby, do you have any, do we have any comments from staff based on your interaction or otherwise, I guess?
Only that we did, yeah, we received the most up-to-date landscape plan, I think, earlier today or, or late yesterday, replacing those white pines with the Douglas firs. So, and that was, as the applicant said, I had gone out with the applicant after your last hearing and tried to locate where those gaps in the plantings were. So I think the planting plan as shown is, will provide the screening of those canopies. And then in your packet, I had drafted some conditions that I think, when you're ready, can be as a guide to support that screening going forward. So that screening should be for, to block the views of the canopies themselves and also the, the lights there at the canopies. And then, actually, I should add, so you did also receive in your, in your packet tonight, shortly before the meeting, we had an email from Anna Butter on Canton Street. He was going to try to be here, but he had sent this in case he didn't make it. So I don't, I don't know if you need me to read the whole letter or if I?
If you want to summarize, maybe if you give, I mean, base, I mean, my personal take, and you can summarize maybe, well, actually, you go ahead and summarize first, then I'll give you.
So it looks like this, so Butter had, had been living there for some time, so did have some knowledge of, there was a, this property has gone through some approvals in the past dating back from the late 80s. There was an original subdivision creating the lot, and then there were some special permit, and then it was modified ultimately in 99, 2000 timeframe. So there was a special permit, and at that time, there was reference to a 200-foot building setback. So whether that was an agreement as part of that original condition for the original development of the office building, or if that was part of our zoning at that, at that time, I'm not, I'm not sure exactly. The wording from the 1999 or 2000 special permit talked about no, no buildings being within this 200-foot area. So that 200-foot setback is not shown on the plans you have today. So that's some of what this is referring to. But he has reviewed the plan submitted and believes set the landscape plan with intent of screening, will provide that additional screening to block and recommend, and he has some suggestions here about some recommended language for conditions to maintain that screening so that the canopy, the buildings, but also the canopies, aren't visible from the ground level of the abutting residential.
Yeah, we talked about that at the last meeting as well.
Yeah.
The setback? So essentially, the trees grew and then they, so then there was no screening at the lower level?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, but unless I missed it in the video, did they, did you guys discuss this 200-foot setback last time?
No, no. So that was something that was shown on the plans from that 2000, 99 modification. And then if I look back at our zoning today, it does, it calls for 125-foot buffer where there's no structures or no buildings, but then an additional 75 feet where it can be, let's see, the exact language is, non-enclosed structures. So there's kind of ambiguous of structures, you know, these canopies are considered structures, but they're not, they're not buildings and they're not enclosed. So I think back then, at that time, they didn't anticipate solar canopies in the late 90s.
Where was this wording actually?
It was a finding in the 1999 or that 2000 special permit. It was a finding because it was?
It was a finding, but it wasn't a condition.
It wasn't a condition, but it was?
And was the 200-foot line actually on the plan?
So, yeah, so they, we did also receive?
That's the?
The attachment, yeah.
That's not the final plan, that's only, that was like a preliminary plan.
I can't, I couldn't tell at, at this point. I, I didn't have a chance to find the final modified approved plan, but the, according to this, one of the plans that was reviewed at the time, the 200-foot setback is within some of the parking spaces where these canopies are posted.
Yeah, I mean, looking at, looking at the plan, you know, the plan that these guys have prepared, I mean, 125 feet, you get nowhere near the canopies. And then the 200, you cap, you hit some of them, but not many of them.
It looks like you're within 150 easily. This one goes over the, and then a couple where the ends of those.
Yeah, I mean, this?
That's about it.
That's 180 to my, to my thumb. And it's like barely, you kind of grace the edge.
I kind of measured out on my computer screen, and it's this one was within the 200 and some of the...
Yes, six, yeah.
The first, well, three deep parking spaces in here would be in there.
I don't have an issue with that.
No. Well, I think Steve's email was not quite as, is not as detailed as what you were reading us about the 75 or the 75-125 combo.
Yeah, because that comes from our current zoning. So, I don't know if that was our zoning back in the 90s. The 125 and then the additional 75-foot buffer is in our buffer zone, industrials.
Industrial or...
Yep. Let me just, let me just find it.
Oh, so, so we have 125 foot where we have no structures, but you can put parking.
Hold on, just a moment, I will...
And they, and they increase it by another 75 feet voluntarily.
Right. So, section 6.34 of the zoning talks about uses within buffer zones. So, at the beginning of this section, it says, "No building or structure except, no building or structure except for fences constructed in accordance here or within." And then, when you go down a bit, it says, "In the industrial districts, 125 feet is the required minimum. The remaining 75 feet of the buffer area may be used for unenclosed surface or off-street parking or other permitted outdoor uses, providing such uses are screened from view at normal eye level on said residential boundary line."
Okay.
I think we got by the show.
Those were screens.
And so, I think ultimately, the landscape screening plan with some conditions will help maintain that screening.
Okay. Or any other question? Oops, sorry.
Yeah. I want to review the lighting plan.
Sure.
So, there are, so some of the, well, a lot of those existing lights will be removed. Now, would any of the existing lights be changed from double to single or from single to double, and which one of those?
Yes, sir. Yeah, if you look on page seven of the lighting plan, there's a table that has a luminary schedule that shows...
Wait a minute, page seven.
All of the arrangements that are existing and proposed.
Were the page numbers on these?
Sheet looks like the one that's up on the screen.
So, what are we looking at here?
So, in the luminary schedule, what you see there are, there's a number of symbologies that show what the under-canopy lights look like. That's the 122 count that you see at the top. Then, there are 15 existing light poles that have a dual fixture that are going to remain. There's 39 singles that are going to remain, and all of these were built into the model. 26 wall packs that were added to get the light levels up in some of those darker areas that we talked about at the last hearing. There's going to be two light poles that are coming down that are going to be reused that are installed near the west wing of the building, and that's to get the light levels up above at least a half of a foot candle in some of the open areas that we're losing when we take down some of the poles. And so, you see those lights, they're on, they're on the overall site plan on page one, but they're referred to as RE, as in reuse an existing fixture. And they're, one is very close to the building and one is on the north side of the west wing.
So, what is there now?
I'm sorry?
What kind of light is there now?
There isn't a light there now. So, that calls for reusing one of...
Oh, so you're going to completely install a light where there was none before?
Right.
Okay.
And again, that, and it's mainly because the lights that were at the end of the parking canopy that have to come down were illuminating that area before. And so, there were two instances, two areas which we called, the lighting designer called a dark spot that he needed to get illuminated.
So, at the end of many of these places where you put the canopies, there are double lights, and one of them is, looks like it's almost over the canopy, so it would be shining down on the top of the canopy.
Right.
Is that, is that the case?
I'm not sure if...
I mean, look at, oh, you know, 120, was it 124? 124 is a good example. Some of them are...
Yeah, that's a, that's an existing light pole with a single fixture that'll remain. And again, that's providing light out to the edge of the parking.
So, but mostly, it'd be lighting up the traffic island, the vegetated island underneath it, but it looks like it'll also be lighting just as much of the roof of the canopy.
Well, I mean, it's, it's in the opposite direction of the canopy. It's a single that's pointed away from the canopy, not towards the canopy.
Well, it looks like a double. That's, is it a single? I mean, it's shown on the plan, the picture shows a double.
Yeah, you're right. And it's just hard for me to read at this scale, but it very well could be, and again, it may have been just...
I'm looking on, I'm looking at the enlarged pages.
Right.
You can see it much better.
Sure.
The first enlarged page. And then...
And I think it's...
If you go to the third enlarged page where, I'm looking at 144, the same thing, 177, they seem to be shining mostly, just a little bit down, directly down below, but mostly on top of the canopy itself.
Right. And again, I think with the height of that luminary, like, it does provide some light on, towards the outer limits of that, you know, before it gets to the next canopy.
And are those lights that are existing in place right now that aren't going to move, they're just going to stay put, right? So, there's probably some economy of just leaving them.
There is. I mean, the geometry of the site is, you know, I mean, it's not going to be letter-perfect as we're starting from scratch here. It's using a combination of existing, you know, fixtures and facilities that are out there to achieve what the goal of the project is.
And the, and the additional lighting, you're adding what the so-called, what do they call it, wall packs or...
Right.
Now, where are they being fixed to the actual canopy?
To the fascia on the canopy structure itself. So, there's a cut sheet for what the fixture looks like at the back of the design package. And you'll see it's, it just calls for, you know, the contractor's going to have to fashion a bracket, and it's a seven-and-a-half-pound fixture that'll be mounted to the, to the fascia of the, of the canopy. And the height at which the light levels were modeled, there's another table, you know, behind the luminary schedule, that it's either 17 or 19 feet tall, depending on the slope and the height of the canopy.
You don't have the original submission where it shows those.
Oh, I do on here.
Because it's not in the note that we have.
I think we had, I think it was... So, I think the, this planner, is this the one that we have?
Yeah, keep going to the, where it shows the, the canopies themselves, the ways down, I think. Yeah. So, when we look at this, do we actually see all those, all that bracing below it or is that covered up? What is the...
So, that's just structural cross-bracing?
Is that exposed or is that...
I believe it is, yeah.
Okay. So, but the top of it is all, so exactly where on that would they be attached?
So, the lights would be at, at the end of the canopies. You know, the, they're either going to be, can I walk up?
Yeah. I'm sure I bring that microphone with you if you could. Sorry, just the recording gets you.
I have a pointer, but I understand the pointer doesn't work on the screen. So, I think that they're going to be installed either here where they're shown at the end of a canopy, or if they're on the side, they're going to be installed on the fascia at the ends.
Okay, so are they generally on the high end or the low one?
So, there's two different heights. I think one is 17 feet and one is 19 because we're at a, I think, a two-degree tilt and a, or a one-degree tilt and a seven-degree tilt. And so, the combination of heights, I think the minimum height, there's a clearance here that's given is 14 feet to the lowest elevation, that if a car was to pull in, that's the lowest. And you've got about 17 feet to the low end of this one and 19 feet and 21 feet, 19 on
Do you have another comment?
I think that's it for the...
Okay, sorry. I'm not sure if you were searching for something there or not, but I think...
All right, so I think the, to address Mr. Raski's issues there and all of the neighbors is they're concerned about not having any light trespass. Well, no, let me correct that. They won't have any according to the lighting plan, but they're concerned about not being able to see the building, which was apparently, which was originally promised by having that screening. And so, the new screening should solve that problem.
Absolutely.
But they're also concerned about as trees die and, and they grow and they lose a lot of branches or whatnot, that the screening still be maintained in such a way that it stays effective.
Right. Well, and I, the applicant's committed to that absolutely, you know, they're, I think that the plan that they have is pretty robust, just from, again, I wasn't involved in the original planning of this site, obviously. I'm far too young for that. But the white pines have done quite well, you know, and they've done a good job. If you look at the year-over-year pictures that are available, the aerial shots, they're green year-round and they do provide a lot of buffer. We had originally proposed white pines just because they're a good species for that. But I think that we came back and put a variety of things that are dense immediately, and will have an impact right away. And so, we're, we're committed to improving those view sheds for the residential abutters, for sure.
So, we came up with some wording to make sure that the landscaping would be maintained in a way so that would effectively block the view from the neighbors as long as these canopies were used.
Yes, but if you're ready, if you want to take a look at it, it was in your, the latest, I tried to update it after receiving this, these comments this afternoon. I'll just summarize, I'll read them. Number one, "All plantings shall be installed prior to the completion of the solar canopies and maintained as necessary to provide a year-round impervious screen of the canopies and the canopy support structures such that they are not visible from the ground level of the abutting residential properties on Canton Street, Hemlock Drive, and Partridge Drive." The applicant shall, number two, "The applicant should use best efforts to complete plantings in the fall 2017 planting season. However, if not feasible due to the construction and weather, the landscaping shall be completed prior to the final closeout of the building permit, department's permit, and shall be planted no later than May 31, 2018." I know the planting season usually goes to around Thanksgiving time, but it all depends on weather and getting, getting the plants. Number three, "The applicant owner is responsible for lifetime replacement of all plantings. Any dead or dying trees or material, plant materials shall be replaced in kind annually." And number four, "The existing unused light bases in the landscape buffer areas shall be removed prior to the completion of the solar canopies." That's what you talked about last time, the concrete bases. And then, a fifth one that was suggested by Steve Raski was the, "No other structures within the 200-foot building setback are permitted with this approval." So, he had suggested that you add language prohibiting any other structures within 200 feet from the residential.
Just a repeat of the original.
So, what is, how's that worded?
No others, or, "No other structures within 200 feet of the building setback are permitted within this approval." If that makes sense.
Oh, no other structures within the 200-foot setback?
200-foot setback, yeah.
From the, is, okay.
But there's nothing else planned, I don't, is that even necessary?
But they were not, yeah, it's...
Right. That was a, that was a suggestion.
Feels redundant to me, too, but it's fine.
And in your findings, we discussed that we're not even sure whether a waiver can be granted for the turning the lights out, but it's, as the applicant pointed out, since they never close, then they never have, after closing hours where they have to turn out the lights.
Right.
And you can just recognize that fact in the findings.
Right. So, you have, they requested two waivers, from the waiver requiring a traffic study and the presentation model. And then, there was also a request to have the lights on, on all the time because they have a 24-hour call center. And the zoning bylaw requires lights, except security lights, to be turned off an hour after close of business.
Then they're closed.
Their, their request to you is that they don't close, therefore, they would like the lights to remain on for security reasons. So, when you review that, if you agree to that, you should probably make a finding base justifying that the facility is open 24 hours and therefore not, doesn't have a traditional close-of-business.
Okay. And then, the second one was, because we have a...
Right, and then...
Height limitation of 15 feet for, for anything that's mounted on a wall of a building, but...
Right.
We don't regard these canopies as buildings, therefore, they're not attached to the wall.
Right. So, if you accept this lighting plan that you have in front of you, the light fixtures are over that 15-foot height, although that 15-foot height really is talking about wall-mounted fixtures, but you should specify in your findings that these are more consistent with light... but you should specify in your findings that these are more consistent with light poles rather than a wall-mounted fixture.
Anyone from to my left have any comments or questions?
No.
Feeling good about EverSource?
Well, I'll make a motion that we waive...
Ask the public if they have any interest in this. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to, has a question or a comment on this topic? Okay. I had a feeling, but anyway, go ahead.
So I'll make a motion that we waive the requirement for a traffic study and the presentation model.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the two waivers. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, that's, the two waivers are accepted, I think. And do I hear a motion for approval?
I just want, so, so you have any problem meeting any of these?
No, sir. The five conditions.
The conditions, yeah.
Those are all acceptable.
So I move that we accept the application with the five conditions as outlined in addition to any other regular conditions that you normally have.
Okay.
I will second that motion.
All right. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we've, so moved.
Thank you.
Yes.
Move to close the hearing.
I'll make a motion that we close the hearing.
Okay, I have two motions, three. All right, I have two motions and a second. I guess I'll cover it. All those in favor to close the hearing for the EverSource project?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item five is a review of street acceptance requests submitted for town meeting.
All right. West View Estate subdivision, that's Thompson Avenue, they have submitted the requests to, for street acceptance. We received a report late today from Phil, behalf of Beta Group and DPW, that they've completed all the work. They've confirmed that the subdrain went in. So all the work has been completed. So I would recommend you make a motion now because the public hearing with the FinCom is before your next regular meeting, so if you could make a motion now, I'll have some suggested conditions that we can have and then we can update them the same evening at the FinCom's hearing because they're, still have to plant the trees. So the outstanding items are, the trees are in progress, that you approved the modified locations at your last meeting. A few have been planted, but they're aiming to have those all in by the end of next week. The as-built plan is, needs to be updated to show those tree locations. The applicant, I'd recommend the applicant apply for a file certificate of compliance with the Conservation Commission. I know they're working to get on the Conservation Commission's next meeting agenda on October 11th. And then I request a final revised O and M plan be submitted to Planning and Conservation staff. We had some edits that we had recommended changes to. So I'd recommend that those four conditions be completed prior to town meeting acceptance.
Okay. Okay, any other questions or discussion? Do I have a...
So you want us to recommend to FinCom that, that they approve the street subject to those four uncompleted items, which are contemplated to be completed by town meeting?
Yes. Well, okay, so actually if you're able to meet on the 17th, if, if we can meet at 7:00 PM on the 17th, that way if the trees are in and we have all these items, so the Board of Selectmen have to hold a street acceptance hearing. Theirs hearing for this is scheduled for the 16th. So I could forward your motion from tonight to them for the Board of Selectmen to be on the 16th. But then the following night at 7:00 PM, the trees should be in and we should, aiming to have all these items, then you could provide an updated motion for the FinCom's public hearing on the 17th that starts at 7:30 if you're able to. I know it's a lot, but they're, they're trying to get the trees planted within these next two weeks.
I think it's fine with the condition. I mean, it's, it's really up to the applicant to do what they, if they don't do it, then it doesn't...
Right. If, if it's not in, then you can update your vote prior to town meeting.
Well, we have the vote and...
With these conditions.
To the FinCom that those things have been completed, that they have.
Yep.
You don't have to modify your...
Right, or, I mean, if you're able to, then it's just a little less, all these conditions. We can just say a clean recommendation on a 17th and that way you don't have to update it. If you're able to, but, at least if you can make a motion tonight, I will report...
Start with tonight and we'll worry about the rest later.
I move that we recommend street acceptance with the following conditions to be completed prior to town meeting, as the four that you mentioned.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second for acceptance. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 So do we need to meet at 7 o'clock just for this?
If you could, we possibly, because we do have a couple other requests. Yeah, we, we do also have a request for a possible change in the bond also for Westwood Estate subdivision. And, so that's Hydro, would like to have a change from a release of covenant to a tri-party agreement. And then another Fox Meadow Drive, if you remember, this is the street acceptance from the spring. They're looking for a release from their tri-party agreement. So if you're available to meet at 7:00 PM, you could handle these items before the start of the FinCom's public hearing at 7:30?
Do those other two items have any bearing on the FinCom or anything else? Are these items just isolated, aren't those isolated things that don't have anything to do with FinCom or the town meeting?
No, nothing to do with town meeting. It's just...
So why can't they wait until...
The 24th. Okay.
They can wait till November.
They can wait to the 24th, okay.
Yeah, I think they can wait to the 24th, so...
All those other items, okay.
Yeah. I'm, I'm sensing we're sort of disinclined to meet again on this, so...
Okay.
Maybe we'll just, if we have to elaborate on the conditions in, in front of the FinCom, I don't think that's a big deal.
Okay, so at 7:30, we can just give a recommendation and I could, I could provide them the report in advance and say that they've been completed.
All right. Okay, next item, so this...
And then one more item added to the agenda was the West, the developer cornerstone for West View Estate subdivision also request a release. So I did review this, this afternoon with Phil from Beta. And so we recommend you partial release from the 2012 tri-party agreement so that you release $129,693 so that you're holding the $49,240, which includes the tree plant, the amount for the tree plantings and the final as-built survey.
Okay. Okay, any questions or comments?
No.
Nope, okay.
Do we, has this been all looked at by the, by Phil?
By Phil today, yes. Sorry, we didn't get a report. He just said yes, that's satisfied. Satisfactory, yep. Because we got the, updated report late tonight that all the other work has been completed.
So what's, what's being held back in the $49,000?
That's the trees, which is 60 at the 654 and $10,000 for the final as-built survey.
Do we have a motion to grant this release of funds?
Some oath.
Okay, a second? All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye? Okay. Okay. Other business, do we have any upcoming ZB applications that we're...
Yes. Yes, they received two new applications for their next meeting in October. One is for 256 Washington Street. That is the ski stop. That is, it's actually in a residential zone, so it's a non-conforming, non-conforming use, pre-existing. So they've applied for a special permit to make interior renovations to the building to allow the barber shop, so the barber shop that's on the other side of the street now to locate on the first floor of the ski shop building and then also some room for another retail space. And there's, there's two residential apartments on the top floor, and those are proposed to remain.
So it's a three-story? Because ski stop does go to a second floor.
Yeah, it's two stories, so I guess it's like, yeah, it does.
Maybe it's the other side.
Two and a half or three, or, yeah, it has two in the front and then I think it's in the back.
Is that the barber shop that's, though, isn't in, isn't in barber shop? Cafe de la Shop, wow. Yeah, yeah, it's in his way, I guess. Okay.
So my, my draft comments to them, if you had a chance to look, I didn't do them until yesterday, was that the change of use also triggers EIDR, Site Plan Review. But if there's no exterior changes and they meet parking requirements, then an administrative EIDR is, is likely for a change of use of interior. So those are my comments.
Okay. Sounds good to me. I don't have an issue.
And then they also had an application for, on Woodland Road for an accessory apartment. I didn't have any special comments. It was in a basement. It had well-buffered area for the parking. It was, appeared to be a single family from the outside, those design requirements of that Section 8.5.
Is that a new, it's a brand-new apartment?
It's a new one, yeah.
And what are the requirements for, does it have to have a, it has to have its own driveway? Is that, is that part of it?
No, it's on parking.
Yeah, it just has to have parking.
So can it be on, can it be on-street parking?
No, no.
It has to be off-site, yeah.
It has to be Wall Street parking of some sort, in addition to what they normally have.
So presumably if it's a large driveway, then they could just say this is the spot for...
Yeah, and that's what they provided.
I was just curious.
Oh, boy.
Do we have a total number on accessory apartments?
How many have come in since the spring?
Have you run out already?
I think there's been about four, three or four.
Oh, no.
We've had one that's been continued a few times, so it's, it's still on their agenda. I don't, I think maybe three or four.
No, that's fine.
I think. So, it's a little bit hard to see in there, yeah. Yeah, so they show their, I think it's the apartment that they show on their plans is like 775 square feet, which is, 900 is the maximum size.
Do you have any questions or comments? Fine by me, all right. Anything else from... Anyone have a committee report to share?
So many to choose from, I know.
Oh, well, oh, well, we, Dave and I went to the...
In motion, moving together.
Moving Together Conference by MassDOT. And, and, you know, I think it's worthwhile attending. I've attended every year for quite a while. And this is your second time that you attended, and interesting workshops. Can you find out the latest in what's happening in pedestrian bicycle, complete street activities over at MassDOT? I think we are, since we're way ahead of the game in complete streets in Westwood, we're quite a bit beyond what they were presenting.
They were, like, the Complete Streets presentation was, you know, I kind of wish we had, we should have featured because what they were presenting was kind of like, oh, look, we made the shoulder a little wider here.
Complete Streets won't light.
Of course, the more urban projects were a lot more involved, but we were definitely ahead of the curve on a lot of this stuff, so it was encouraging. Also, I went there in 2009, I think, because I was just interested in stuff. And the difference from then to now is really dramatic in that there's so much support for walkability and pedestrian bike issues and treating it as transportation and not sort of just a recreational kind of thing, but recognizing that it's, every community should be planning for this as a part of transportation, not just like, oh, and we should do something for bikes and walkers, but that we should consider it as a part of our overall transportation plan. So it was a very, it was a huge conference, too. There were, what, eight or 900 people there?
About 900, yeah. So the new thing that came out, MassDOT is working on a lot of new plans of different types. New bicycle plan, new pedestrian plan. So the latest thing that they have out is a resource, resource guide for municipalities on how to make the streets walkable and bikable. This was, the part they have is mostly, well, no, it was, it's a bus, I took a quick look at it. Definitely walkable. It was, yeah, it was geared more, well, because they showed bike lanes also. They showed quite a few things to, you know, all part of this big streets scheme. And I saw some things that we've already been doing and we, changes we've been making, clarify things about driveway entrances and things like that. How those will be arranged to, to give the pedestrian the priority on sidewalks where they cross driveways. So that's, I forwarded to the, a link of that to the Pedestrian Bicycle Safety Committee to look over and, because they want, MassDOT wants comments on it this month. So anyone who wants to can also read that. Suppose you could forward the link to...
Okay, yeah, I'll send it out to everyone, yeah.
Planning board members.
Was there any, was there any discussion of the impact of autonomous vehicles at this conference that you ran across?
No, no, they didn't really get to that. Now, there might be some more discussion. The MIPC meeting at the end of the month in Quincy, they might have one.
Yeah, yeah.
They definitely will have electric vehicles there for people to look at.
Yeah, I, I kind of alluded to this in a comment I made earlier tonight, but my, my firm is actually involved in a lot of cutting-edge research on, on just that topic of autonomous vehicles and the future impact of that. And it's, it's something we would probably behoove us all to at least get on the internet a little bit and look into the predictions about when this type of technology is actually starting, starting to impact things like zoning and planning and parking and architecture. It's quite real if you read some of the white papers and listen to some of the stuff that's coming, coming out of, yeah, coming out of the universities. It's, we had a lecture from a gentleman from University of Oregon last week who has been doing a lot of research into this, into the topic. And there is a faction of predicting an adoption rate that's going to skyrocket in the next six to nine years, not six to nine decades, as some people might be feeling. But, so it's real, like, it's a real thing that's gonna, I think, everyone's feeling like it's gonna have a big impact on all sorts of things, and I think complete streets and pedestrian bicycle safety should be at the forefront of it as well, so.
Yeah, that's good.
And the question is, would it be reducing parking requirements?
Right.
Because you have fewer vehicles being more in use all the time.
Yeah.
Fewer in the garages. Fewer in the garages, so less demand for that, which could affect some of the things we talked about earlier. If there's less demand for, for parking, then that would tip, the way things are as far as requirements.
Anyway.
Food for thought, non-committee stuff, but anyway.
I'll be curious to see if any of it, if it starts to find its way onto the agendas of the Transportation Project Council this year, because it's, I have yet to hear anything about it at that, in that forum, but, anyway. All right, any, any others?
They're trying to schedule a meeting of the Islington Center Task Force for next week on the 11th, so it's Wednesday, the 11th, at 6:30 in, at the ICC in the sanctuary. Just need to confirm that there's a quorum, then it'll be posted, so that'll be at 6:30, and then after that, the public adjourn by 7:30 to attend the East Street Bridge meeting, so the MBTA is holding a public information meeting at, I believe it's Downey, just have to confirm the location, but I think Downey at 7:30 on Wednesday next week.
Has something changed?
No, I think they're just ready, I think the plans have been fully designed, actually, I don't have all the information, but I think it's really to update everyone on the progress, because the last time we heard was almost a year ago, and I think the plans have gone out to bid, and they're getting ready to move forward so construction can start, taking place really in the spring.
So what is the date time of the East Street Bridge?
East Street Bridge meeting is 7:30 next week on Wednesday, the 11th, and then trying to schedule a task force meeting right before that, 6:30, so that people can be there for an hour, then go to the East Street Bridge meeting. And then another update is that Petruzziallo and the Board of Selectmen signed the memorandum of agreement last week, so that means an application can now move forward to be submitted to you for a special permit, so I think they're be working on that, so you might see, I think, the, you know, engineers or surveyors, that one about surveying the properties to get ready. So I think as soon as an application could come before you, would probably be at the end of this year, probably just, because it's a monthly time, from the time you get it to you can have a public hearing, so I would think either your last meeting in November or your December meeting.
Oh, can't they just wait till the January 1? Anyway, all right, well, look forward to that. Okay?
Fire station, fire station is open, you're invited to a, the kind of grand opening next week on the 12th, so that's 8:00 AM on the, on the Wednesday, Thursday, the 12th.
It's the hose bib thing, right?
Yep, yes.
What do they actually do? Hose uncoupling?
I don't know what that is.
Yeah, I didn't get it until, and so, you look at it this way, instead of a ribbon cutting.
Oh.
Uncouple the hose.
Oh, that's what it is, oh, okay.
Very clever. Clever fireman.
Okay.
So they are looking, I think, for RSCP if you're planning to go, just to let them know.
And the Gay Street sidewalk meeting is.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes, it's right now, yes, so it started at 7:30.
Can we, can't we do something to keep these?
Yes, yes, we, I am trying to post everything to the website and remind everyone that everyone should always look on the website, we have the meeting calendar, and we have a meeting posted, to put it on there, because we put yours up a year ago, don't worry.
You're always yelling, you're badgering us.
That's why, that's why I like to book them in a year.
Well, we're a little more predictable than other stuff, but.
Yeah. We'll try.
Presume it's still happening, so we could, if we wrap this up, maybe we can go, if those are people interested.
It did come up at the FinCom hearing, there was some discussion about that, so there's a.
Yeah, because there is an article on the warrant for town meeting for funding for the design work for sidewalks on Gay Street. Not for the construction, but for the design work.
But didn't we approve funding for design from Thatcher Street to High Street?
There was a little bit of, I think, a little bit of the complete streets money from, yeah, the, an earlier town meeting was a survey.
Survey?
Survey, yeah, so there's first a survey, then there's the design, the full design, and then there's, there would later be funds for the actual physical construction and.
I don't think, I think shovels will not be hitting the dirt anytime soon, but it's exciting to see it taking, taking shape, so.
All right, anything else?
You've been back there all night, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I can answer my own question.
Okay. Okay. Sure. Okay. Okay, any other topics? Okay?
Minute approval.
Oh, sorry, yes. We have minutes from?
Minutes from September 19th.
Does anyone have any comments? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from September the 19th, 2017.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
I have four ayes, I'm actually abstaining, because I was absent from that meeting. Okay, I'm ready, motion to end the meeting, close the meeting?
Like to make a motion to close this meeting?
Hear a second?
I second that.
All right, all those in favors?
Aye.
Aye, all right, thank you, everybody.